Okay, calling the meeting to order. First order of business, Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
(inaudible)
We would ask for a moment of silence. We lost a student at Hal High School. So if we could just have a moment of silence, please. Thank you. Pursuant to the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Laws of 1975, this meeting has been duly advertised in the Asbury Park Press, issued July 23rd, 2011. All municipal clerks of townships and boroughs within the regional high school district have been duly notified and requirements of posting new notices have been met. Okay, we have motion to approve the minutes of the following meeting. Mr. Boyce? Mr. Acetola?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
I will abstain from the 27th. Yes, to the executive session on the 11th of July.
Mrs. Canario?
Yes.
Mrs. Lavin?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Messinger?
Yes.
Mrs. Sutera?
Yes.
Mr. Mazur?
Yes.
Mr. Moses?
Yes.
Okay, communications on file in the Board's Secretary's Office. Report, superintendent's report. We have a presentation. Yes, it is.
Good evening, folks. First and foremost, thank you for coming out over the summer. I wanted to just give a brief overview to the public. We engaged in a leadership retreat over three days this, over the past couple of weeks, with a number of the district administrators. And with the real focus, and you can read the title, cultivating a shared understanding of our district promises, but really taking a hard look at what we're doing, how we're moving forward, how we're measuring and gauging our success, and especially as we move into a strategic planning process, I felt that it was vital to do so. And also to begin to cultivate systems thinking, looking at the organization as a whole. We have six high schools that do very, very well. Oftentimes, they are functioning independently in the sense that they have to. They have different demographics, different communities, understood. However, we really need to take a look at the district initiatives and the district needs and begin to look at our organizational structure as a whole, a little bit tighter than we've done in the past. So the focus of the leadership retreat was to do that. And in all candor, it was an opportunity to talk openly with one another about what we really held dear, what we believed in, the initiatives that we really thought had to be pushed forward, and to disagree, agree, prioritize things. And it was three wonderful days that I think set the tone for the school year. And we really looked at change, the change process, and focusing on adaptive versus technical change. Technical change are, you're in a position, you have authority, you make a decision, and everything keeps running. It's kind of that day-to-day management. And technical change is, not that it's easy, but it certainly comes very easily, and it's just part and parcel of our job. The real work as a district administrative team is to look at adaptive change. What's the type of change that, as a system, we need to grow to meet those challenges? So how do we learn together in meetings? When you conduct an administrative meeting, you have an opportunity to move the district forward, you have an opportunity to maintain the status quo, and you have an opportunity to move the district backwards. And I think we spent a lot of time looking at how we can always make sure that we move the district forward when we have everyone who's in an administrative capacity and a leadership team, especially at the central office and the building level, working together to make those decisions and to learn together. I think that's the bigger piece. Well, the days included two days with the assistant superintendents and the building principals, and one day with the administrative supervisors, the assistant principals, and the seekers. And I say 38 team members, three days, one shared vision. The shared vision is a work in process, certainly, but I think we spent a lot of time really beginning to refine our district initiatives so that that vision started to emerge. And this is really a precursor to the strategic planning process. We took a long look at our mission statement, and we took a long look at what kind of promises do we make as a school district? So when we say we're going to do X, Y, and Z, what does that tell us about what we hold dear? What do we value? And how are we measuring that? And what we found were, we were in agreement on a lot of the things, most of the things that we really value, that we think sets Freehold Regional High School District apart. Where we had more difficulty as a leadership team, we're really finding the metrics in terms of how we were gauging that and how to determine effectiveness. So we spent a lot of time talking about that and really focusing on establishing clear and consistent expectations for student achievement, focusing our initiatives through the lens of the instructional corps. The instructional corps is the relationship between students, teachers, and the content in which they're engaged in. As a superintendent of schools, I am by title the instructional leader of the district. In the practical reality of things, I don't think we often spend enough time, as superintendents, engaged in what really matters and what's supposed to drive us, and that's student achievement. So when I have opportunities and offsites with my administrative team, we're not going to cover the minutia, we're not going to cover things that can go in email, we're not going to go over the technical processes that drive us on the day-to-day basis, but we're going to gauge in how do we move the district forward to improve student achievement. That should drive every decision that we make. So what were our goals? Reflect upon and prioritize our existing work in the district. This is a very large school district, almost 12,000 students, six different high schools, very easy to become, washed under the influence of the urgent rather than the important. And what I mean by that is, it's very easy for us to get caught up in the day-to-day activity of putting out fires, of engaging in initiatives because a problem arose and we say, "Oh, we can solve that, so let's do this." What that does is, it limits our ability to really plan long-term and then to, when a problem arises, to say, "You know what? That solution doesn't fit in our plan, and it doesn't fit in what we said we were about, so we've got to reconceptualize that in some manner." So really reflecting upon and prioritizing ongoing initiatives. First thing was, get up on the balcony, take a look around the district, and let's see what we're doing as a school district, what is occurring in terms of academic initiatives throughout the school district. The second component was to identify high-leverage initiatives for increased student achievement, make sense of our existing work. Now let's take a real close look at those initiatives and say, of these initiatives that we've laid out, which one or which multiple initiatives would most likely increase student achievement if they were implemented effectively? So let's come to some consensus on what we think are our high-leverage initiatives. Jim Collins, the author of From Good to Great, talks about the importance of stop-doings. And he says that stop, the things that you stop doing are sometimes just as important as the initiatives you undertake. And in public school systems, we don't do enough with the stop-doings. What happens is, we launch initiatives to meet student needs, and they're well-intentioned, and then you'll find out, we said this in a retreat, "Hey, whatever happened to the initiative that we were doing in 2004? Oh, Jim Smith was the guy who was really behind that, and he left the district, so the initiative, you know, died out." We don't necessarily really take a hard look on a year-to-year basis and say, "What's working? What's not? What do we need to stop doing to move forward?" And really kind of reframing how we look at our initiatives. And I said to the leadership team that I really believe it's important to look at those items on a quarterly basis, not just on an annual basis. You should have specific goals that you're measuring on a quarterly basis if you have an initiative that's underway, and you should be able to speak to whatever that progress is. And if you can't, you're not measuring it effectively, and you're not engaged in something that's a worthwhile initiative. Then we looked at organizing our team members around a common vision of our work. The board had a workshop this evening where we talked a little bit about shared understanding of terminology. And we spent some time with that because I believe a shared vision is imperative for positive change. So when I say, "We are going to increase student achievement," folks understand what I mean by student achievement, what I'm using to measure that, what are my metrics. We talked about the term rigor, and that rigor means 100 different things to 100 different people. And if we don't have a shared vision for what that means as a district, then we can go off in eight million different directions, and we all think we're making progress, but it doesn't necessarily make the sense that we thought it did. And then, common language itself and the usage to encapsulate district work and priorities. One of the things that was required of all district administrators this summer was to read a book called Switch, How to Make Change When Change is Difficult. It's written by the Heath brothers. It is a fantastic book. I'd recommend it to anybody who's just looking to make any kind of change, because it's not specific to school settings, although it speaks to school settings. What it did was, I wanted to find a way to identify common language for the change process that we could embrace as a school district. So there's certain roadmap that's laid out in Switch, and they talk about a number of things. They talk about differentiating between emotional and analytical need of the folks that you're working with, and being very clear about understanding when you're tapping into emotion, when you're tapping into analysis, when you can be a victim of analysis paralysis and just look at everything too much without making a decision, when the emotional part of what you want to do runs away from you, a very clear process over that. They talked about initiative fatigue. In schools, we are guilty of this. Any folks who have been teachers in the audience, you know. Initiatives come down, come down, come down, come down, and what ends up happening at a certain point in time, some folks might say, "This too shall pass. Mr. Sampson, I'm going to outlast you. Good luck with that." And people get overwhelmed, right? And so how do you make sure that you're not overwhelming them? Well, there's certain things that you do. First is, you're not guilty of something that's known as the fundamental attribution error. And the fundamental attribution error is when you say, "I told these folks to do it. We need to make this change. Why aren't they embracing it? What are they doing? You know, there must be something wrong with them." And you're looking at it through a different lens. It's not a people problem, it's a situation problem. They talk about that, that that person may not, it's not necessarily that they don't want to embrace the change, they're overwhelmed by the scope of the change sometimes. So you have to find ways to do something that the Heath brothers call shaping the path, where you make it easy for that change to be successful, celebrating your bright spots, where you highlight the folks that are really doing it well, scripting the critical moves. And that goes back to my quarterly reports, where you're very clear about what you expect at certain times, and everybody has a benchmark of success to measure themselves against. Imperative. And then we talked a lot about, how do we develop our internal leadership? How do we continue to grow it? We have two folks here who are internal leaders who are up for promotion tonight. Terrific. We have 800 and some odd teachers in the school district. We should really be taking the time to develop our folks and to embrace them from the time they walk through this district to say, "If you want to be a leader in this district, we're going to help you on that process." And we're not just going to rely on some ed admin program that's detached from Freehold Regional High School District, but we're going to take the time to work with you and to develop you and to give you the opportunities and the experiences to make a difference at the Freehold Regional High School District. So when you're ready to make that move, we've cultivated that over time, and we should have a steady bank of leaders that rise through the ranks here. We're too large not to. So we talked about that and how we make that happen. Our guiding questions, a little bit redundant, I spoke to this in the first part of this, but what are we doing? Why are we doing it? And how are we doing it? And implicit in that is, what is our strategy? So we spent a lot of time walking through this, and then we tried to make a determination. Well, what does this tell us about our strategy as a district? We found that we were very aligned on what we wanted to do. We found that we lacked a coherent strategy. Liz Higley in the audience, you might have used the term kitchen sink, I think, correct? And it was kind of throwing things out there, and all wonderful initiatives, but what's the overarching strategy that we're funneling things through? Or strategies? And how do we determine those and make sure that we funnel all initiatives into those specific strategies? And if they don't fit with what we want to do, we can throw them out. We can say, "This doesn't fit with the plan." So we don't stretch ourselves too thin, we stay real focused. Again, to go back to Jim Collins, he talks about the hedgehog concept. What's the one thing you can do better than anybody else in the world, or what do you believe that you can do better? Those are the types of things that we should be embracing as a school district and saying, "We're going to do this better than any other district, and this is how we're going to embark on it." So what did we do? We walked through a process, we walked through a process developed by Liz City out of Harvard University to make sense of our existing work. I'm fortunate to spend time at something known as the Panasonic Foundation in the state of New Jersey, New Jersey Network of Superintendents. It's a group of superintendents throughout the state that are devoted to the instructional corps, to being the instructional leaders in their district. And it's a lot of commitment to do that and to be reminded that that's what you should serve as, because there are a million other issues that come up during the course of the day that will take your time away from what really matters. So Liz City is one of those folks that have influenced our work, who has influenced our work tremendously, and we walked through a process that she created. So the first thing we did in teams was identify all of the ongoing initiatives that were happening in the district. And we categorized those in nine or 10 different categories, and we used stickies to put everything up. And then we came back and folks said, "All right, this is redundant, this fits here, this fits there." Then we broke into the whole group and we said, "Okay, some folks don't know some of these initiatives that are happening in other buildings, so if you have a clarifying question, ask it, and then someone else in two sentences or so would affirm what that was and give an overview of the initiative." And then we went back through again, and I said, "Okay, look at all those initiatives, and then go through with a different colored sticky as a group and come up with the three to five that you think are the most high leverage to increase student achievement if implemented effectively in the district." So then we came up with our colored stickies, and we took a look at that. And we had a group discussion about, you know, what was valid with those initiatives, what were the high leverage points, what were the critical points of entry for us to move the district forward. Then we did something that was very interesting and I think is always telling. We said, "Okay, we've identified these great initiatives that we know are going to increase student achievement. How do we measure it? Well, we do this, we do that, we do this." Okay, well, what does that tell you? We have a hard time, this is where school systems lose focus a little bit, in establishing your metrics. How are you going to gauge student achievement? And it's much more than just the HESPA scores, obviously, or the SAT scores, or the AP scores. Those are part and parcel of measuring it. But when you launch an initiative, there should be specific timelines of things that you should be able to point to and without a doubt, unequivocally be able to measure. And if you can't identify what your metrics are going to be going in, then your initiative is probably doomed for failure, or it's going to mean all things to all people. And it's just going to be one of those things that goes. And maybe one day, when Jim Smith leaves the district, it will end with him. So we wanted to avoid that. And I'll give you the perfect example. When you read district mission statements, you see this wonderful language, and you're going to see ours. It sounds great. It's terrific, right? These visionary mission statements. So if one of our promises was to develop scholars, going to develop a scholar, by the end of your time at Freehold Regional High School District, you are going to exit a scholar. Well, my first question would be, if I asked all of you to take out an index card right now and tell me what a scholar meant, I'd probably get 30 different definitions. And if I said, "How are you going to measure that student being a scholar at the end of ninth grade, the end of 10th grade, the end of 11th grade, and moving forward? What are those measurements going to be?" Wouldn't necessarily be able to tell me, I don't think. And if I said, "What does a scholar look like in the social studies? What does a scholar look like in English? What does a scholar look like in mathematics?" Folks would probably stumble for meanings on that. So we put out these wonderful mission statements, but the work of the district leadership team is to be able to develop a shared meaning over what that means, put in metrics in place that we're going to be able to measure it, and then be able to identify and study longitudinally how we're doing that, right? How do our students do when they leave us? What are they doing five years after they're out of our doors? What are they doing through the step that we can point? We should be able to sit down, ultimately sit down with parents and say, "Your student's completed ninth grade. The academic path that your student's on right now has an 80% success rate of graduating college in four years." Or do it. We should be able to do that. And the forerunner in that is the Montgomery County Schools in Maryland, a district of 144,000. If anybody has an opportunity, check out their website and see what they're really doing in terms of gauging their effectiveness as a district. And I model some of that work off of what they've done. And then we use the retreat as a process to lay the basis of what will become the strategic planning process. What most districts tend to do, there's two ways to do a strategic plan. You can go external, where you just poll everybody, you get 800 different perspectives on what the school district should do right, and then you somehow fit that on what you're trying to do. My philosophy is that you should go internal to external. So as you begin to identify what is ongoing that's effective in the district, what the folks in the district really value and believe, how we're going to produce scholars or whatever it might be, you then grow that outward through multiple feedback loops that involve numbers of community members, internal to external. So we talked a little bit about that and how we might do that process. And then we did an exercise where we looked at our mission statement currently at Freehold Regional High School District, and we said, "What are the promises that are made in that mission statement?" And it was an interesting activity. Some folks took the literal, sorry, some folks took the literal interpretation of what those promises were, and other folks looked for more implied promises and what that meant. And then we took that a step further and said, you know, "What do we value? What does the mission statement tell us as a team that we value? And then what does that tell us about our school district? And again, how are we measuring success?" And then we looked at our bright spots, and we said, "We're about to engage in a strategic planning process." I put the admin team through an activity where I said, "You're starting a school district tomorrow. You can take three people with you. Who are they and why?" And folks really struggled with that. Now, that was a way of me identifying who's really valued throughout the district and why, which was a specific point. Folks had a hard time with it. You know, one of my principals said, "I can't do this. This is, you know, you're asking me, I value this person, I value that person." One of the administrators that I did it with here actually called me back the next day and said, "I want to change my answer. I thought about it more." It was really, but it was an eye-opening exercise to see what we hold dear and what kind of attributes we value to move the organization forward. And really, you know, Doug Reeves talks about the toxic 2%, and focusing, the way we should look as a school district is focus on your doers, focus on your people that are doing things well. You know, Todd Whitaker talks about harnessing your people that are your bright spots, that are the folks that make a difference every day, that go above and beyond. They should be celebrated. What ends up happening is, we might go to a faculty meeting and there's 150 folks in the room, 45 of them are like, "That's a great idea." And five of them are upset about something, and you spend most of your time catering to the five and not the 145 that want to move forward. And in education, we're guilty of that. So how do you flip that and move the critical mass forward for continued improvement? That's what we need to look at, and we need to look at our next level of work. And we outline that, you know, what's it like a week from now? What's it like a month from now? What's it like a year from now? What do we want this to look like? And I think always keeping the next level of work in mind is an important consideration when you're launching any program or process. And so how do we keep our promises? I introduced the team to a concept called the Theory of Action. And what a theory of action is, is it's the roadmap, the practical roadmap, to keep the promises of your mission statement. So they're often laid out in very simple if-then statements. If we do this, then we will assure that this occurs. But when you really look at a well-developed theory of action, and they're fluid and they're developed over time, when you really look at it, it's a real complex process. It looks very simple initially, and when you really dig into a well-defined theory of action, it's rich, it's deep, and it's multiple layers. And so I gave the team some example theory of actions that I've worked on related to specific issues over multiple years in the past and how they developed over time. We talked about developing feedback loops in the community, internal, external, school community, external community. How do we do that? How do we make sure that we're giving the community opportunities for multiple areas of feedback? And how are we making sure that we're soliciting that feedback in a really effective manner? And then we talked about, what are our actionable items coming out of here? Well, we did a couple of things. We identified our bright spots of folks that could serve on a strategic planning committee and be a part of the process. We identified a litany of constituency groups that should be a part of the strategic planning process. We committed to reinstituting a mentoring program for our new administrators in the district and having fidelity to that program and looking at how we can develop leadership academies throughout the school district moving forward. We committed to having the academic supervisors come on a monthly basis and make a presentation at a board meeting to the various initiatives that are underway in their departments. And then we identified the overarching promises inherent in our mission statement. And we came to consensus that what it really comes down to in Freehold Regional High School District presently are a comprehensive educational environment, producing lifelong learners, and having a supportive environment for all students. And all means all. And in what venue? So we committed to that. The next step for moving forward, and here's the mission statement, the current mission statement, the next step moving forward will be to convene a community relations committee, for which I've been soliciting applications, identify a steering committee within the district to move the strategic plan forward, and to begin to move that process come September. So that was where our leadership retreat took us over the past three days. I have to thank Dr. Kegler, because she really said, "Hey, this is something that's valuable to get the folks together to give me the time to do that." And we don't spend enough time together as a leadership team to really hash out the problems of the district and to come up with what we think are real viable solutions to move forward. So it was a tremendous experience. It's something that I look forward to continuing to do with the leadership team, and it's certainly something that I think has far-reaching benefits for the school district as a whole. So thank you for your time tonight.
Next up, we have board reports.
I have one, Mr. Moses. You don't mind? I'd like to, I actually like to thank central administrations, especially Jason, who I understand we're going to be losing soon to another district. I guess you're gain, possibly our loss. Congratulations, Jay. I'd like to thank members of the public, Gloria Close, Mrs. Hotberg, and of course, our two athletic trainers, Eric Nesbom from Coltsnek and Mark Bramble from Marlboro for assisting in putting together the concussion policy, which is going to have a first reading tonight. Hopefully by the August board meeting, we'll have all the corrections made so it's effective by September 1st in order for our athletes to be ready to go for this coming fall athletic event. So I want to thank everybody in the committee for their help and support. It's a very tedious process. We got it done in time, and we move forward.
Thank you, Bill. Anyone else? Board reports.
You know, I'd just like to ask Dr. Hazel to give an overview of the anti-bullying committee that's put together. It's a first read tonight, and she's done a lot of work with a pretty extensive team through that, so if you could just update us on that process.
Absolutely. As most of you know, the new anti-bullying law was signed into law on January 5th of 2011. In accordance with this law, our district has been very hard at work reviewing the policy and developing other policies that are implicated by this law. The intent of the law is to ensure that we provide a safe and secure environment for all of our students, promoting respect and a supportive and caring environment. This will also build new lines of communications in our schools to combat any acts of harassment, intimidation, or bullying. To meet that end, we as a district have formulated an anti-bullying task force. It's comprised of one assistant principal and an anti-bullying specialist from each building. So there are 12 representatives on the team. That anti-bullying specialist may be a guidance counselor, a SAC counselor, or a school psychologist. We have spent countless hours working as a team. Each of the high schools have developed school safety teams within the building that work in harmony with the building principal. The school safety teams, as well as myself, the district coordinator, have attended many trainings throughout the spring. We will continue to be trained through various workshops throughout the summer. We're taking this very, very serious. Our district really doesn't have a true issue when we do our report of electronics, violence, and vandalism, the report that we disseminate to the public and hear through our superintendent. However, this law-- However, this law does have some serious implications for other policies. It requires us to put many procedures and protocols in place for our district, which the team has worked. So we're going to have a uniform policy, a uniform set of expectations for our students, as well as standardized operating procedures within our school. Tonight is the first read of that HIP policy, as well as the other policies that are implicated by harassment, intimidation, and bullying. The second reading will be at the August 22nd meeting. We will also have a presentation by the district task force and myself, so that we could entertain questions from the public and from the Board of Education members, as it relates to that policy. So our full district team will be here to meet everyone, including the board members, at the August 22nd meeting. Our schools are also working diligently on putting forth different prevention programs and initiatives. So we're ensuring that this message is getting clearly communicated to the public, to the parents, and to our students. We take a zero-tolerance stance, as it relates to bullying, intimidation, and harassment, thank you, with HIP. And all of our administrators are right on board with us as we institute this HIP policy. Thank you.
Okay. I want to backtrack for a second. I would be remiss if I didn't recognize the positive direction that I see this school district going with our new superintendent. His comments about hiring from within, the leaders we've produced in this district, and also, I think, causing a more friendly atmosphere in the leadership program in this district. So I just want to thank, I know I call him Chuck, but I guess in this instance, I should call him Mr. Sampson. Okay, next, we come to my favorite part, because it reminds me of my psychology class, public comments. Suzanne, did you have a couple?
Yes, I do have one change, board, on I-3, item C. That number should be 754,710,11. 754, not 753. Page 19.
On page 4, Petrello Dominic changed the resignation date to July 25th. Page 6, the appointment of the paraprofessional Milton Jenkins. Delete the word "additional" and change it to "replacement." And one more on page 17. Volunteer coaches, Freehold Township High School football. Remove the name Christopher Rash. And that's all I have from my section.
Thank you, Suzanne.
Thank you.
Okay. The public participation comments. I would just like to reiterate that we have a new policy now, and that is that we enjoy passion, we don't enjoy attacking. Thank you very much. So here we go. We have Gloria Close. You want to go there, Gloria? You can go there if you want to, wherever you want to go. There's a microphone there, Gloria. We can, we can. You need a stepstone? No, just, it's got a gooseneck, just bend it down.
Can we turn the podium around, so it faces us?
Sure. Oh, no, no, it's taped there.
I got it.
There we go.
Good evening. Gloria Close Manalapan. Diaspora Park Press published an article on July 21st on school aids to communities. Since the school budget for the current year was already set, I would like to make recommendation, I would like to make comments regarding this additional funding that the district is getting. So far, only 20 out of 580 school districts are giving it back to the taxpayers. I suggest here at the Freehold Regional High School, we apply the extra money to decrease taxes to alleviate the burden to the taxpayers. The country is still struggling with 9.5 unemployment, 9.5% unemployment, wages freezes, salary cuts, benefits cuts, increases in their medical contributions. Some would think this is an unrealistic idea. We all know that once the money goes into education, it stays. I would therefore suggest that the additional aid be kept in its own line item, and not necessarily be added onto the current revenue, nor onto the surplus. This can be applied for the 2012-2013 budgetary process to lower the tax levy. Or we can allocate the total additional funding specifically for the infrastructure repairs, renovations of the existing school buildings. I believe this board, through the recommendation of Mr. Boyce, will be seeking bond referendum of 79 to 80 million in November. I suggest we do not proceed to bonding, or putting this district into more debt, but rather seek more infrastructure grants from the state to help pay for the repairs. To apply the newly found money by granting raises would be offensive to the struggling taxpayers. I feel the board has the responsibility to inform the district how this money will be used. Just for your information, the additional aid for Freehold Regional is 3,435,720, up 7.7%. In today's agenda, recommendations for salary increases are back for approval. The taxpayers have spoken, and this district cannot afford to grant any more raises at this time. We are still in the worst economic downturn, with no relief in sight. This is not about undermining job performances, but rather being sensitive to the current economic conditions. Before I commend the assistant superintendents for agreeing to freeze their salary, I would like to clarify one thing. The assistant superintendent's contracts, with the exception of Dr. Hazel, have automatic longevity built into their contracts as follows. An assistant superintendent with three years of service would get 3,000 longevity pay. After four years, he would get additional 3,000. After five years, he would get an additional 4,000. Six years of service, 4,000. After seven years, and every year thereafter, he would get an additional 5,000. Longevity pay is in addition to any other raises that may be granted. Even if salaries are frozen, the longevity pay must be granted. This is absolutely outrageous, and has to be corrected. I urge this board to examine these contracts, and negotiate new contracts that are more fiscally appropriate. Last one. Time up?
I didn't say anything.
Okay, thank you. Because we only have one meeting a month.
Go ahead, Gloria.
On the 20th of July, it was reported that the Freehold Regional High School is one of the five school districts that have informed the Jamesburg School District Board of Education that the Freehold Regional High School is willing to consider the idea of accepting high school students from Jamesburg at 16,100 per pupil per year. Manalapan High School is considered the ideal location to accommodate the Jamesburg students, if the plan pushes through. I would request, being a Manalapan resident, I would request from this board to conduct a study, whether this idea is profitable to the district. The board has to consider unforeseen expenses in educating a student by providing not only the academic requirements, but also the special services if needed, and after-school activities. Manalapan residents will not be pleased to see another high school being built because of increase in students' population, should this idea be approved. This needs further infrastructure study, traffic study, to determine the impact of additional cars and buses on the already overcrowded roads around Inglistown and Manalapan High School. Open discussion with the Manalapan Township and taxpayers of Manalapan are extremely necessary before any decision is made. I just have a question to my board rep, Mrs. Sotera. I just want to find out the total population of students at the Manalapan High School at this time, and what is the anticipated enrollment come June? Do I have time to ask questions? Three questions? Still?
Are they small questions?
Very.
Okay.
Because, but it is, it's very difficult. Now, I noticed at the agenda, we only have one meeting a month. So we have to.
Only for the summer?
Just the summer.
Oh, just, okay. Thank you. I ate several times at the five-star cafe at the Freehold Borough, and was so thrilled to witness the students in action. They are just fantastic, and I'm so proud of them. Although culinary school does not charge a lot, I'm just wondering, what, where is that revenue applied to? Also, we have several vending machines in all our schools. How is that handled? Does the district accept bids from vendors? Do we apply the revenue of those machines to our revenue line item? And how much revenue was recorded last year? And how much surplus money does the district have right now? I believe, and just, yeah, I know. I just would like to say, welcome, Mr. Simpson. I was out of state, and I never had the chance to, you know, wish you the best. And also, I would be remiss if I don't say thank you very much, Dr. Kegler, for being there for this district when we needed an interim superintendent. You have done a marvelous job. Thank you. Thank you very much.
I think we have some answers for you. Okay. Yeah, I'll take the, first and foremost, the school aid situation. The option of giving that back to the taxpayers is still on the table. What we refused to do was make a decision in a 48-hour period about how we were going to do that. But the option for 1213, and how to apply that money, is still open. So we kept our doors open. The money is 1.7 million. It's not 3.4 million. It was incorrectly reported in newspapers, where everybody wanted to take credit for giving that money back to us. However, half of that money was already applied in your current budget. So it was 1.7 million, correct, Sean? The, so that, it's not what it was represented to do. And I'll let Sean speak to the specifics in a moment, but we felt that the prudent decision was not to convene the board in some ad hoc manner to make a rushed decision to give it back, when we still have that option available to us next year, where we can sit and actually make a more informed decision. And not with the timeliness component, the lack of time, I should say, that was there. As far as the assistant superintendents and longevity, what the contract says, that's a template contract, but I can tell you that the longevity, because I talked to the county superintendent, we're not approving any longevity, and that's not existing in assistant superintendent's contract. So that's no longer accurate as well. So those folks, by law, what it says is, if you have longevity, your salary cannot be reduced if you're a tenured employee. However, moving forward, there is no longevity for assistant superintendents.
Okay, so because they just opened the contracts, Mr. Sampson.
Correct.
So you would revise that?
Yes, they have to, they're going to, they went to the county superintendent, and I think what you have is just a template wording of the way it had been, Ms. Close. So the county superintendent, I have just discussed this, and it's not even, that's both a state and district, county issue with longevity to begin with, in those contracts of assistant superintendents. And it's ultimately the county superintendent's right to approve or disapprove. And he will not even approve contracts, moving forward, that have longevity in them. Sure. The issue with Jamesburg, all we've done with that is listen. You know, so Mr. Boyce and I, because I think it would have been, if we hadn't gone over to Jamesburg and listened, what would have happened is, a number of folks would have gotten up to the podium and said, let me get this straight. You had a neighboring district that offered to generate potentially several million dollars in revenue to your school district, and you didn't even go over and listen to their proposal. So we felt, Mr. Boyce and I felt that we were obligated to at least go hear what those folks had to say. All that happened out of that. The only thing that occurred is that they agreed to send us a demographic report. We agreed to look at it. Where it became suddenly that these kids were going to Manalapan High School, I can't tell you. I don't know where that rumor started. That was never even discussed. They're sending us demographic issues, demographic materials. We agreed to look at it. Mr. Boyce is launching a demographic report for our school district as a whole, and we were just going to take a look at it. So that was one of those rumors, I think, that spread like wildfire, that all those kids were going to Manalapan High School. All it was, was we sat down for about 45 minutes and listened. And that's where we left it. And we certainly wouldn't engage in any decision like that that we weren't able to handle as a school district, nor would we do it without vetting it through the public. So right now, that's all it is, is listening. There's about, Mr. Sampson, is about 2,200 kids in Manalapan currently?
Just 2,200.
Yeah, thank you. About 2,200 presently at Manalapan High School. And then Mr. Boyce, I think, has some specifics on the state aid. I think that he could probably speak to you better than me in some of the other questions.
Yeah, essentially, there were four options. And just to clear up the confusion on the amount of state aid, what the newspapers cited was the amount year over year. Half of that amount had already been included in the budget that was approved by the voters in April. The other half was roughly 1.7 million, was the amount of additional aid that we received. So there were four options. One of them required a quick turnaround. And that was to provide immediate tax relief to the municipalities, which Mr. Sampson and I looked at. And as he mentioned, it was 48 hours worth of time to pull the board together and take action on that. The next option was to infuse it into your current year's budget. Okay, so recognize it as revenue, and offsetting with an additional appropriation. That is not our recommendation at this time. The other two options deal with 1213. One of them is to provide property tax relief, and the other is to put towards the operating expenses of the district. Now, one of the interesting, unique situations with the 2012-2013 budget is, the current year's budget has educational jobs funds, federal aid, that's a one-time shot. And we have no expectation whatsoever that we'll be receiving that aid again next year. Coincidentally, it's about the same number as the additional state aid. The additional state aid was 1,717,820. And the Ed Jobs Fund money is 1,763,514. So they happen to be roughly the same number. So one of the options, at this point, all options are preserved for the board to make in 1213, whether or not to use the additional state aid to offset the drop-off in federal revenue, or to support programs, or to put it towards property tax relief. And as state aid unfolds for next year, and we typically find that out in the February-March timeframe, we'll see what our situation we're in, and we'll deal with it at that time. Mr. Sampson, one other clarification. Mrs. Close, your Oprah request regarding the assistant superintendent contracts was the current contracts that are in effect. So that's the 10-11 contracts is what you have. And yes, you're right, that there is some boilerplate language that includes a longevity. I can tell you, the contracts that were sent to the executive county superintendent, if the individuals had not achieved that longevity, that language is gone from those contracts. So my contract, for example, that language is no longer in there. Regarding the proceeds from the culinary program are all put directly back into the culinary program to defray the cost to the taxpayers, to run that program. And with regard to vending machines, that money is managed at the school level. It is used for student purposes only, through their student activities account. And that's subject to annual audit, which we are about to begin shortly, our fiscal year 2011 audit. So I think I got most of the ones that I wrote down. If I missed anything? Oh, I don't have it off the top of my head, but I can tell you that there's a cap on it. It's 2% of your operating budget. So it will never be more than 2% of your operating budget. Any amount at the end of any given fiscal year that is in excess of the 2% is automatically, by law, earmarked for tax relief in the subsequent year. No choice. And our auditors identify that in the comprehensive annual financial report. Okay, thanks.
Okay, next up, pretending that we're down south, we have Mr. Leon.
Leon Searonik-Manalapan. First off, I would like to commend the decision to continue the freeze on the assistant superintendent salaries, as stated in the agenda. But, Mr. Sampson, what is this urgency to offer raises to everyone else? In each- In each of the previous meetings, the main item in your agendas, as far as the public is concerned, was raises. At the last meeting, raises were approved for supervisors. Tonight, the board is being asked to approve raises for what seems to be everyone else. We're still living through some very tough economic times, and from the looks of the way our government is functioning in regard to raising the debt limit, it's not going to improve anytime soon. For that reason, I feel I have to speak out about the recommended, against the recommended raises that are being proposed for tonight. You were talking about giving raises to employees who are already working, bringing home a check on a regular basis. As some of us have pointed out before, there are many hundreds, if not thousands, of people in the district who are either out of work, in foreclosure, or have had to take pay cuts in order to keep whatever jobs they already have. In a recent interview shown on the Manalapan Cable Television Station, a woman representing the Samaritan Center reported for the first time in many years, their food bank shelves are empty. The seriousness of this situation should not be taken lightly. A comment was made a few weeks ago that one of the reasons the employees in our district deserve these raises is because they have to contribute more towards their medical benefits. I'm sorry to hear that it is such a burden for a working person to have to contribute more towards their benefits. As has been stated before, seniors on Social Security haven't had a cost of living raise in three years. We also pay increasing premiums for our Medicare and supplemental insurance. There are many increases in our living costs which we can't recover by asking for a raise. You know what we do? We make do with what we have and compensate by cutting back on other expenses. I really resent the idea that as taxpayers, we should feel obligated to provide a raise to working individuals because they now have to contribute more towards their medical benefits. If there's one thing seniors do on a regular basis, they vote. Most of the time, they take the time to ask questions and learn about where their money is going and why. I don't believe that too many will be happy to see that while we are learning each year to live more and more within our means, that this board thinks that we, as taxpayers, should be compensating other working people because their cost of living has gone up. And secondly, it's insulting to all those people who have to rely on the food banks and the Samaritan Center for support. And just parenthetically, what a great statement this would make from you, Mr. Sampson, to the students and the community as a whole, to take the money that you would have allocated for these raises to the working people of the district and donate it to the Samaritan Center for the food bank. Thank you.
Just a few points of emphasis. The contract with the academic supervisors was bargained through a collective bargaining agreement, so that was a negotiation that was undergoing all year and was agreed upon and mutually agreed to and put forth on the last agenda. So that's not in my purview to establish and make those recommendations. What is in my purview is to make the recommendation for the non-units. And in looking at that as a whole, I froze the Assistant Superintendent's salary. The folks in the non-unit bargaining, non-unit work group did agree to a salary freeze last year, so their salaries were still at the July 2009 levels. I don't think anyone has come to me and said that they felt overburdened or felt that it was unfair that they had to pay more on their health care benefits. I think the fact of the matter is that this is legislation that was passed in the state. And as a father of four, I have no problem paying for my health care, nor do I have any problem as those costs increase. And I don't think there's, there hasn't been any individual at the board office who's come to me and said that this was unfair in some manner. But the, you know, the fact of the matter is that that is an escalating scale, and it will go from 1.5 percent up to 30, depending on your salary range, up to 30 or 35 percent of the cost of the premium, which I think anyone who has health coverage views as fair. And at the end of the day, the Assistant Superintendents will go into the third year at the same salary, and I recommended a 2 percent raise to the folks who took the salary freeze and paid the 1.5 percent, and that's my recommendation. Next up, we have Helen, or Miss, is Helen.
Helen Hochberg, Marlboro resident. I see on tonight's agenda that the firm of Schwartz, Simon, Adelstein have been extended to September 30. I would like to ask the district, where are we in the RFP process moving forward? Also, on page 14, I see Susan Connors is being moved as the vocal coach from Marlboro High School to Freehold Township. At Marlboro High School, Mrs. Connors was the vocal coach to three groups that included a select ensemble, a women's chorus, and a regular chorus. The Marlboro High School students will miss Mrs. Connors terribly, and I congratulate the students of Freehold Township on getting her to help them in the next year as we go forward. Mr. Dalton is being appointed the vocal coach of Marlboro High School. He is a very talented musician and does a great job leading our orchestra, jazz band, and marching band. My question is, can Mr. Dalton take on these additional responsibilities as the vocal coach in addition to his current commitment of his time to, you know, be okay with all the music students of Marlboro High School? So that's my question. My final question is for Mr. Adelstein. Has the district recovered any money from the insurance company regarding Bonnie Sue Rosenwald's litigation? Thank you very much.
You had the RFP? I'll just Marlboro first, just to address the question about Mr. Dalton, is that we are still literally in the process of examining the master schedules in each building, and there's a lot of conversation that's going back and forth between the building principals and members of the administrative team in Pine Street, and we're looking at how we're going to make sure that everybody's able to teach what we want them to teach and how that's going to play out. So that is still a fluid situation, Ms. Hochberg, and we'll, we're not going to put anybody in a position where we're going to diminish a program, or not allow that to function properly because we've overloaded one particular individual. So that's a working process. And, um... Yes, sure. Thanks. The, as I reported at the last meeting, that negotiation, which is very close to being over, is not quite over. But I want to make sure you understand something without giving away too much of negotiations. The insurance company has, in the course of this discussion, offered the entire policy. We've rejected that offer because we think by their conduct, they actually owe more than the entire value of the policy, which they're attempting to limit to one policy period. So there's no question about the fact of recovery. The only question is how much above the policy limit will the recovery be? I had been optimistic that that would be concluded by the end of this month. I'm even more optimistic that it will be concluded by the next meeting.
And, yes, with regard to the legal RFP process, Mr. Astola, Mr. Moses, Mr. Sampson, and I had the opportunity to meet last week with some industry experts that reviewed our draft RFP and provided us with some feedback as recently as today. So we'll digest that feedback, make revisions as necessary, and that RFP will be out on the street shortly.